Sal, you ready? All right, welcome to the third council meeting. Today is January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. I welcome you all to the council meeting. Alyssa, can you please do the statement of proplication?
In compliance with Chapter two thirty-one, a public law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the Borough website, front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Roll call.
Mary Gindy?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Seula?
Here.
Councilman DeZemian?
Here.
Councilman Krasinski?
Here.
Councilman Krenzel?
Here.
Council President Olivera?
Here.
Please stand for the salute to the flag.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. There is no proclamations or awards. We are going to be going to the agenda session. I am going to start off with the discussion for the first readings first before we get into the South River Film Ready. We have four ordinances to be read today. I believe two of them goes to our Borough Attorney and the other two go to our CFO, Joe Zanga. Joe, can you touch on the two?
Sure. First one is two thousand and twenty-four dash one. It is an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank for two thousand and twenty-four. This is done annually, gives the Borough flexibility in their budgeting process. The state of New Jersey allows towns to increase their budget inside the cap by two-point-five percent. If this ordinance is approved, it can be increased to three-point-five percent. Inside the cap is usually insurances, salaries and wage and pension costs and usually everyday expenditures. If it's not utilized in the this year's budget, you can bank it and use it in the next two years' budgets. That's what we do every year. It's an annual ordinance. The second one is a bond ordinance for various road improvements. It is for Daley, Darrow and John Street. Ordinance is nine hundred thousand, of which we're getting six hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars from the New Jersey Department of Transportation and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars from HCD funds. And if we spend the full amount, the Borough will have to borrow one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. So it's about seventy-six percent funded from outside, twenty-four percent from the Borough. That's it.
Andrew?
Okay, two thousand and twenty-four dash three is a parking restriction in your property maintenance code. It restricts parking in your front yard. And two thousand and twenty-four dash four is another parking restriction ordinance. If adopted, it will prohibit parking on North and Drive, on both sides of the street.
That's a great. All right, thank you. Now we're going to go to the South River Film Ready. Let me explain to you what this is about and then I will have, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing a wrong name, David Shoner?
Shoner.
Shoner. Explain this to you. South River Film Ready, we actually titled it this way. As you all know, throughout the state of New Jersey, there are so many different places, so many different towns that are utilized in either movies, commercials or films that are on Netflix, FX, you name it. A perfect example is the city of Cranford. It's been used on several, several takes. Now, what you don't know is when they come into your town, they benefit all your commercial as well as they do touch on the Borough as well. It's something that brings a lot of revenue to your commercial as well. Like, it's something you want in your town. There are times where it may be a little havoc, but at the same time, this is, you know, they work with us. With that said, David, if you could introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about you, explain it.
If I can hand out some packets for everybody, if that's all right?
Yes, absolutely.
Just to give you a little more info.
Thank you very much for entertaining us tonight. My name is David Shoner. I am the Associate Director of the New Jersey Motion Picture and Television Commission. The New Jersey Film Commission used to be a part of the Secretary of State's office, but recently Governor Murphy moved us into the New Jersey Economic Development Office. In the New Jersey Economic Development Office, we're charged with bringing film production into the state and managing it because of the economic benefits that the state derives out of it. I just wanted to talk about some notes. I have some stuff here that we typically do on a PowerPoint presentation and I'll talk about it a little bit more. So, production spending in New Jersey increased from sixty-seven million in two thousand and eighteen to seven hundred million in two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-two, New Jersey hosted over six hundred and nineteen projects, including ninety-five feature films, twenty-one Mindy series and ninety-nine TV series. Since the revival of the film and TV tax credit, a total of thirty-three tax credit projects generating over six hundred and twenty-three million dollars last year alone happened. In two thousand and twenty-two, the film industry created eight thousand and five hundred jobs in New Jersey. Right now, as you may be aware, if you read the media, we have thirty studios and counting. Netflix has announced a one billion dollar investment into what used to be Fort Monmouth. In Newark, Lionsgate is spending a hundred and twenty-five million to develop a studio there. And in Bayonne, we have eighteen eighty-eight studios that will be happening openly in the next couple of years. So one of the things that the New Jersey Film Commission wanted to do with this massive influx of production is establish what we call a Film Ready program. Because as we start having more and more production in the state, municipalities may not be understanding what is going on when a film company comes to town and also how to get them ready for film productions that are coming here. When Disney, Paramount or Warner Brothers are coming into the state, we like to let them know that a municipality is what we call Film Ready, which means that we've kind of taken them through a process to know what to expect when hosting a film company and also the studios know what to expect, what to get from a municipality. Our office is here to help municipalities and also nurture them. Our Film Ready program is a five-step process that we do to take you through all the little issues and obstacles that may come up when you are going to be hosting it. I'm just going to go over them right now. So part of our five-step program is, one, you attend the Film Ready workshop. So we haven't had a Film Ready workshop yet. We're going to be having one soon on actually April ninth now. It's going to be in Morris County Community College. The second is designating a Film Ready liaison. It's a liaison that film, the Film Commission and film studios would deal with and interact with when they're in a municipality. Third is adopting a formal permit ordinance. Some towns adopt a very strict, you know, permit. Others do what we call a code of conduct. Cranford and Somerville do a code of conduct. It really depends on the municipality. The fourth is uploading film locations. So, South River's already done that one. We went out with the mayor recently and toured the town and photographed the municipality. So our office is going to be in the process of uploading, uploading those. And then the last is listing, a list of local resources. When a film company comes into a community, they spend money here. We encourage them to spend money here. So whether it's going to a local dry cleaner, maybe it's going to a convenience store, maybe it's using a caterer, we really want them to use local services and we kind of manage that as well on our level. I'd like to give you an example. We had a TV series called Wild and Out. Let me just get my numbers here. Wild and Out, and I want to just talk about some of the numbers that they actually happened when they were in the town. So Wild and Out is a MTV show and they spent ten thousand dollars in a company called Hard Out that's based out of East Hanover. And Hard Out provides production vehicles. Uber costs for this show that filmed for three months was six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. The courtyard by Marriott that they stayed in was a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Herc Rentals, which is lifts and stuff like that, they spent thirty-two thousand dollars. Four-Wall Entertainment is a company that provides services that's based out of Munaki to the production company. They spent seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. There is a company called Time which does catering. They spent a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And a carding company to remove waste or anything that has to do with their set building, they spent approximately nine thousand dollars. So Film Ready is just part of a program where we work with the municipality to answer any questions they have, address any concerns that they may have and also work through the process so that when film companies are thinking about coming into a town, we can help them and also the town knows what to expect. I could go on forever. I love to talk. The mayor knows that and, but I love to entertain any questions, anything that may pop up or stuff like that. What I handed you is our annual report from last year so you can see the economic impact. I also gave you a mini PowerPoint presentation on the economic impact. I also gave you a PowerPoint presentation in there about our Film Ready program. I gave you a recent press release that we have. And also, we, as part of our Film Ready program that's on our website, we list sample ordinances, samples of letters that could be sent out to residents when someone's filming in town and all the little particulars that may be there.
So Dave, I want to thank you. Something that Dave and I had the opportunity to work on, most of you already noticed the gate next door at the PNC, but there is a film that's actually coming to the PNC. And the PNC, since it's privately owned, although the impact is not going to be as great as you would expect it on the streets, I mean, there are going to be times where the police are going to be informed, the same thing with the Department of Public Works, Police Department, sorry, Fire Department. This film is going to be a series where they're going to be here for about two to three weeks, I believe?
Two to three weeks. So the series is called Thriller, if you're familiar with it. It's AKA American Horror Stories.
We cannot tell you.
Yeah, I can say, you know, so it's a production that's out of FX. We've been working with them for a while. We actually have two of Ryan Murphy's shows here in the state right now. One is American Horror Stories and the other one is about Aaron Hernandez's life. It's a fictionalized show. And so this is part of what we do. I was touring the town with the mayor, taking photographs as part of step four of the Film Ready process. And he asked me, what do film companies typically look for? What is it that they want? There's typical stuff that they want. And I told him, well, it's typically a closed bank, police station, schools, stuff like that, closed hospitals. And the mayor said, well, we have a closed bank in town. So we went over, looked at it, I took some photos, sent them up to the location manager that coordinates it. He fell in love with the process and then it kind of made its way through the production food chain where they come down, they look at it, they do what's called the tech scout to see whether it works, what all the dynamics are, and ultimately they fell in love with it. So we're happy that they're actually going to be doing an episode here for the show and something for FX that you see. And part of my job is, now that we have the tax incentive here, is I'm really boots on the ground. At one point when we, our office was functioning back in a previous administration, we only did about sixty-two million dollars worth of production. We did not do a lot. And ever since we've had a tax incentive now, we've barely had to bifurcate all of our jobs at the Film Commission. So I have an executive director that really deals with the high-level paperwork process, the tax incentive process. I've become boots on the ground, which means that I attend town council meetings, I go to meetings with police, I go to police with fire, I interact with anyone on a municipal level with the production company. Most of the time, I'm kind of interpreting what both sides want and try to find a happy medium if there's any issues. And then we also have some people in our office. We have a PR person, we have administrative assistant, we have assistant production coordinator who is my assistant. I have a production coordinator that deals with a lot of commercials and music videos and corporate and educational processes as well. We're based out of Newark and we're part of the EDA. I'll talk forever, folks. If there's any questions, you know, that's what I'm here for.
I have to tell you, I had the privilege of being around a lot of directors and a lot of, you know, people associated with this film. As a matter of fact, tomorrow I'm actually taking a walk through Main Street. They want to see delis. They're looking for destination places for all these people that are coming into our town. Dry cleaner, you know, they have a laundry list of stuff that we're walking around. And I can't thank you enough for coming in. Now, I had the opportunity to speak to our attorney and believe it or not, she's worked on something like this down in Seaside Heights.
Yep.
We are hoping that we're going to move on this with the whole council where this could be a Film Ready town.
Right.
So this is, this is a big thing for this town.
We do the designation on our website. Our website has really grown. We have over seven hundred thousand photos on our website that's accessible by a database. We also truly monitor the economic impact in the municipality. Sometimes it's greater, sometimes it's shorter. It really just depends. But while they're what we call prepping over at the bank, the local crews are going to eat somewhere, they're going to patronize the local businesses. And sometimes it's a little bit more bigger, sometimes it's smaller, it really all depends. I use Cranford as an example all the time. When we did the feature film Bros, they needed to create a parade and they needed balloons. So they didn't go, you know, shopping balloons. They went over to Kennelworth and bought sixteen thousand dollars worth of balloons from a local balloon guy that just makes balloons. We had a, we had a dry cleaner one time for the TV series Special Victims Unit that was filming in the state and the dry cleaning bill for the series was thirty-three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So it's substantial, it's a lot. And part of our role and my role is working with the mayor, working with the mayor, working with the fire department to make it as seamless as possible. That's really the goal. There's always little bumps, but the more communication and the more you talk through stuff and anticipate things, what could happen, then it gets much more seamless. It's all in the prep work.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good? Any questions? I told you I'll talk forever. New Jersey is all over the screen, folks. So if you watch Wu-Tang, season two and three, that's Jersey. Watch Brewes with Halle Berry, that's Jersey. Trial the Chicago Seven, Jersey. West Side Story, Jersey. I could go on. We are really becoming a powerhouse back to the days when filmmaking began here.
One of my favorite was Walking Dead.
The Walking Dead.
Shot in one store, Monmouth Mall.
Yeah, so Walking Dead, Dead City, and we have a new Walking Dead coming out where Rick Grimes, I'm not a fan of the show necessarily, but Rick Grimes comes back and that is another series that will be coming out. Right now, we have Billy Crystal is doing a Paramount Plus show. It's kind of like I See Dead People, kind of that show. They're up in Munaki in a stage right now. I have two Ryan Murphy shows. One is in Carney, the other one is in Jersey City. I have a Bob Dylan biopic that is filming as well right now. They're out of Palisade Stage. And I have a remake of Kiss of the Spider Woman, if anyone saw the Academy Award-winning movie. Jennifer Lopez is starring in the remake and they're also going to be out of Carney. And that's just a little tip of what we do. We do a lot of commercials and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Alyssa, we're going to go into ordinances.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash one, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four.
What's the pleasure?
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash one on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on February twelfth, seven PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at sixty-one Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman, Council President Olivera, seconded by Krasinski.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Second ordinance, two thousand and twenty-four dash two.
Two thousand and twenty-four dash two, bond ordinance providing for improvements to various roads appropriating nine hundred thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
What is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash two on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on February twelfth, seven PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion made by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-four dash three ordinance?
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash three, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter two fifty-eight entitled Property Maintenance.
What is your motion?
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash three on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on February twelfth, seven PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion made by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Krasinski.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-four dash four.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash four, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
What is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash four on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on February twelfth, seven PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion made by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. What is?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
We are going to go into reports. We'll start off with CMA. I know Bruce is out today.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's really no major changes from our last report. For the DOT Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-three Local Aid Program, we are working on a project design for the NJDOT Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-three Local Transportation Projects Grant. We applied for the grant for the NJDOT Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-four Local Aid Program. We submitted our proposal for the NJDOT Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-four Local Transportation Projects Grant. Applications are being accepted and must be submitted by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. For the two thousand and twenty, twenty, two thousand and twenty-three Electrical Substation Maintenance, the contractor is scheduling the testing of the batteries. And for the NJDEP Stormwater Assistant Grant Application, our survey department is working on this year's portion of the project.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Good. Let's jump to Joe.
Just a couple other items. You have a resolution for a purchase of nine-eleven dispatch equipment under a co-op. This was provided for in the two thousand and twenty-three bond ordinance. You also have a resolution for purchase of a pickup truck under state contract and a Chevy Tahoe under a co-op. This is going to be provided for in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. And the annual debt statement, which is due by January thirty-first, was filed with the state and a copy is on the Borough website if anyone wants to look at it. That's it.
Age?
The Borough calendars have arrived today. They can be picked up at forty-eight Washington Street, fifty-five Reed, the library and the DPW office. That's all I have.
Age, I want to thank you. I know in the last past two storms, you guys have done a remarkable job with snow removal along with a lot of buildup of ice. We still have it in certain spots, but you guys seem to keep on getting them. Anybody that has ice buildup, please reach out to the Department of Public Works. They will have somebody out there as soon as possible. Thanks, Age. Chief?
Mayor, the only thing I have is that resolution that Mr. Zanga spoke about for upgrading our nine-one-one system. We haven't upgraded our nine-one-one system since thirteen years ago, so we've been out of warranty for the last several years, so we're looking to make this change with this resolution.
Excellent. Anybody for, any questions? Fire chief?
Good evening. South River Fire Department is currently operating at twenty-three alarms for the month of January and the year of two thousand and twenty-four, and all apparatus are currently in service.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Borough Attorney?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Business Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. The chemical upgrade bid specs have been completed. They will be in the newspaper on?
I think Friday, Friday.
Friday. And we hope to have a bid award for the next council meeting. The Boeck Club Road Talleyard Pumping Station is scheduled to be repaired on February twelfth.
Okay.
It'll take about a week and then we'll be back up with the Talleyard Pumping Station. That's all I have, right?
All right, thank you. Any questions for the Business Administrator? Borough Clerk?
I have nothing.
All right, we're going to start with Councilman Krenzel.
The Public Utilities Committee had a meeting on January the twelfth. Reports are basically just some odds and ends here for your knowledge. The trees continue to be trimmed. We have an aggressive program and this helps us during storms that the trees do not damage the wires. We're rewiring the wires to modernize the system because, of course, there's more and more demand that is being made on them. Our old PCB transformers are being replaced because they are environmentally not sound, so they're being replaced with more environmentally friendly transformers. We're also adding more cutoffs to the, prevent large areas during a blackout. If we have to shut off a certain area, we'll have more of them so less people will be affected. The poles are being replaced. The infrastructure is being looked at. We're happy, we ordered transformers that are going to be sitting on pads. It's going to only take two years to get them. We're voting resolutions today concerning trucks that were ordered back in December of twenty-two. They finally came in. And we also ordered a street sweeper. You've heard Mr. Lindensky talk about the pumping station. That's finally being worked on. That'll be coming back online. And then we have to go to other ones that'll have to be worked on again as we're constantly modernizing, constantly upkeeping the work that we're doing so that you'll constantly have water and sewers and electricity. And just as a side note, one of those fire hydrants that you see out there costs five thousand dollars apiece. So, you know, that's where your money's going. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, at this time, I don't have very much to say. The Office on Aging had a few of their events and everything, but at this time of the year, it's a little bit on the slow side and everybody is still recovering. In the meantime, please be safe and be careful on your walking and what have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President Olivera?
So from a Parks and Rec perspective, I just want to start off tomorrow, we're going to be hosting a public meeting at seven PM at fifty-five Reed Street. We're going after a grant to get an all-inclusive playground equipment and part of the process is getting public input. So if you're able to come, please come. I know, Richard, we had members of your team come and express some thoughts. So if you guys can please show up tomorrow again, the more people we have, the better it's going to be. Volleyball registration will be opening up in the month of February. Flag football and tennis will be opening up in the month of March. Now on to some great things that happened this weekend. Our small borough competed in U eight and U fourteen cheerleading across teams from the Northeast. We competed against teams from Virginia, Maryland, Pennsylvania. Our U eight girls took third place and our U fourteen girls took second place. So kudos to them. They did a really good job. And for our rec wrestlers, this past weekend was a state qualifying tournament and we wrestlers, this past weekend was a state qualifying tournament, and we had four wrestlers qualify for the state recreation tournament. So, hopefully, we're going to get some more at the next qualifiers. But congratulations to everyone involved. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeZemian?
Good evening, everybody. A couple committees that had some meetings that I attended. Planning board meeting. Presentation was given by the DI Group, who are the architectures of the proposed plans for the new preschool learning center to be located next to the high school by the tennis courts and the shade tree. They approved the Borough's application to have a tree removed at Grecorkey Park as it will be in the way of the future inclusive playground for the children and adults with disabilities. A new tree will be planted at the park at a location to be determined, and the group's first rain garden was recently completed at the high school.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
Yeah, I attended my first Board of Health meeting the other night, and they wanted me to pass along some notes and some acknowledgements. First, from the food bank, they would like to thank the community for all of their efforts, for their generous donations, some people even dropping off donations every single week. Each donation, no matter how big or small, is greatly appreciated. We also have many organizations that support the mission of the food bank with special projects or drives throughout the year. Over the next four meetings, they will be giving me more about that. They also wanted to acknowledge the Rio Mar for their Thanksgiving dinner. A special thanks to Rui and to Natalia and the staff of the Rio Mar who gave a large part of their Thanksgiving Day to cook the dinner and deliver the meal. Thank you to the Green Construction for their part in this, to making this dinner possible, to St. Peter and Paul's Church for providing the location, and the members of the Fire Department and the community volunteers who helped set up, serve, and clean. There has been an ongoing thing also called Cozy Coats for Kids. This year, 90 children received brand-new coats specially ordered for them through the Cozy Coats for Kids program. Special thanks to Peter and Grace Giannino of P&amp;G Home Inspections for bringing this program to South River. And lastly, Share a Smile Toy Drive. This toy drive was organized by the Flores-Lawson family and allowed the parents of 103 children to select four toys for each child. Special thanks again to the South River Fire Department, the George Street Ladies' Fire Auxiliary for providing the location and assisting, and to St. Mark Coptic Christian Academy for collecting toys for this drive and the many members of the community who helped drop it off. So, after every month, they will be giving me new updates so that they can let the community know exactly what the Health Department is involved with.
Good. Thank you. Councilman Seula?
Thank you. Good evening. The EDC is working on their membership. They're sending out emails to their past members, and they're looking for some new members, which we've gotten a few people that are interested. So, hopefully, next month, I can give a much more detailed report.
How many people are you looking for?
I think it's three.
Regular members.
We're waiting for everything to come back.
Regular members.
Yeah, regular members. I'm waiting to hear back from the secretary.
Okay.
And I'm also waiting for that, too, is to get the report back from the Alliance from 2023 on what they did.
Okay. I will hold my reports to the comments later. I'd like to open up the floor to the public. 10 minutes. Please state your name, your address. You guys could go if you want.
Hello, Richard Byrne, living in Bisset Place. We did have our first Environmental Commission meeting. We've got a number of events and things planned for the year. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Suarez and his staff for the response to the storm. I, myself, did 39 hours of overtime last week with the DOT on state highways. And yeah, you know, I came home and appreciated the efforts of, you know, as residents, we can help facilitate things. Like, I had, I have six cars and three spots in the driveway, so we parked them on the one side of the street, and then the town was able to plow the other side of the street, the curb. So, you know, we can all be partners in getting things done, done right, and I thank you for that. About our rain garden, they did excavate, fill the soil and the mulching, but unfortunately, the storm intervened, and they couldn't get out and plant the bushes. So, they're gonna push that, the planting of the bushes off until March. So, that's good for that. One of the things we're looking at is a joint green fair this year with the Borough of Sayerville and South Amboy Regional, and hopefully, we can get more stuff for residents to look at and participate in. Oh, the ordinance about getting cars off of lawns and such. Now, from an environmental standpoint, things drip out of these cars. You know, it'd be great if they didn't drip at all, but getting them in, dripping into the ground, that ends up in the water table, and, you know, that ends up causing problems down the road. So, that's a great plan. Our medication will say something in support of it when we have our next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Arun?
Good evening. Arun Agarwal, 20 Brooklyn Road. I'm a pilot and a lieutenant in the branch of the US Air Force. The reason I mention that is I was looking at the website, South River Borough website. I see a list of wonderful liaisons and committees. I would like to request the council, if not already, I would like to request the council to set up a committee for veterans to take care of their issues, just as a mark of respect for all the men and women who have served for this greatest nation and who are currently serving for this greatest nation. Thank you very much, Carpus America.
Thank you. Good idea. Anyone else from the public? Going once? Going twice?
I have a motion. A motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Council President Olivera. Alyssa, can you read the consent resolution?
Whereas Resolution 2024-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it and is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2024-71 to 2024-82. 71, authorizing the amended submission for the Middlesex County Enhanced Recycling Grant. 72, purchase of 911 dispatch equipment for the Police Department. 73, authorizing the purchase of a pickup truck for the Department of Public Works. 74, authorizing the purchase of a Chevy Tahoe for the Department of Public Works. 75, authorize certain utility refunds. 76, property tax refund for a total disabled veteran. 77, accept December 18th, 2023 regular and executive session minutes. 78, accept December 27th, 2023 special meeting minutes. 79, accept January 1st, 2024 reorganization council minutes. 80, accept January 8th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. 81, authorize a bills and claims list. 82, authorize the appointments in the Office on Aging Department.
What is your pleasure?
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes, with abstention from 81, number 23-03104.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
There is nothing for new business. We're gonna go into governing body comments. We'll start with Councilman Seula.
Thank you. First, just want to thank our DPW, Road Department, Electric Utility. They did a fantastic job during the storm. I seen neighboring towns that lost power for hours, and our guys were on top of everything. We lost no power, thank God. Our roads were clean. They were salted. So, again, Age, please thank all the guys for us, or for me especially, and tell them they did a great job. Just on a separate note, Fire Department, we're always looking for volunteers. Again, if you want to volunteer, please stop by the station. You can pick up an application there, speak to the guys, and you can get more of an idea of what we do and be a part of a great brotherhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes, I'd also like to thank the DPW. Did a good job up by the schools, the first responders, our Fire Department. As this gentleman brought up about setting a commission for the veterans, just so the town knows, the Board of Health also has a program called Operation RAM. That's for any service members from South River that are serving out of the country, that we would send them goody bags or anything that they would want from town. We haven't gotten any names. I don't know if we have anybody that's serving overseas, but we would appreciate anything we can do for anybody that is serving our country.
Thank you.
So, if anybody needs to get in touch, they can get in touch with me. We're at the Board of Health down on Washington Street. But we'd appreciate any names we want. Let them know we're thinking of them. And that's it.
Councilman DeZemian?
I echo the same words as the Department of Public Works. For all their hard work, you see it in the town during these storms. The roads are cleared very, very well and quickly.
Thank you. Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, like I said, I'd like to thank the DPW, the Robert Wood Johnson and the Police Department for the current storm that we had, and people keeping their vehicles off the road and trying to let the DPW at least clear the roads and everything and salt them down, and they did a fine job. With the answer to the one particular resident about the veterans, there is a VSO officer that comes to the VFW. If you have any veteran that is in need, let him go down to there and find out what days he actually comes down there, too. So, if you want to have a claim, or you have an issue or anything like that, too, they can rectify it for them. Okay? With that, that's pretty much all I have right now. Thank you.
Councilman Krenzel?
Okay. Yes, Age, good job done. A lot of it is due, as I've said before, the trimming of the trees, redoing the wiring twice. I mean, these were not major storms, yet twice, I lost power in Sayerville. Come in, the office says there's a power failure. Because we do keep track of what's going on, and we are updating things, making sure things work, this is why you didn't lose power. This is why the streets are clean, because we are on top of these things. And we thank the people at the DPW and the people who are constantly keeping an eye on the various items here in South River. Future events, there's a shred event because we have our calendar. We know that. Look at it. It's chock-filled with lots and lots of good information. That's on May the 11th. Also, a hazardous waste event is on the same day, also on March the 17th. So, if you got those old cans of paint, don't throw them in the garbage. Send them up to Middlesex County, and Middlesex County will properly dispose of them. Fundraiser, Rambotics, the breakfast fundraiser at Applebee's on January the 28th from 8:00 to 10:00. The Rambotics are a little organization in, run by students in the South River High School. They build robots, a small group, but takes a lot of money. So, please come out. It's gonna be at Applebee's. They open up the restaurant early, and from 8:00 to 10:00, the students will be serving us. Super Bowl Sunday is February the 11th, and that's Super Bowl breakfast. The Knights of Columbus are having their breakfast from 9:00 to 12:00 at the VFW. Again, please come support one of our fraternal organizations here in South River. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Olivera?
As everyone mentioned, just want to thank the DPW again for all their work. Thank you to our first responders, Chief Miller. Chief, thank you for everything you guys do. Big thank you to Grace and Peter for donating the jackets. Since I've been on council, I think this is, what, the fourth year in a row that they've, they've probably done it longer. But it's a great thing they do. They have a huge heart. They want to give back to this community, and just, again, thank you to Grace and Peter for everything. Now, there is one individual that we would like to recognize. You know, this person is responsible for the, everything you see on TV 35. So, Sal, I want you to come out here if you have a second. He's probably gonna kill me for this, but it's okay. We hear him stumbling around. Come to the middle over here, Sal. So, Sal is the individual behind the camera. He films all our, all our events. On behalf of the council and Mayor Guindey, we just really want to thank you for all your hard work. You know, sometimes, I know it's an ungrateful job being back there, sometimes by yourself, but thank you for everything you do. We really appreciate it, and anything you need, we're here for you, man.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So, as Councilman DeZemian spoke earlier today about his reports, the planning board, first of all, I want to welcome our new chairman, which is Donna Zammit, our vice chair, which is Cindy Urbannick. One of the biggest topics that was at the planning board just happened to be about the new school, or say, the new building that they're building of the school system. I know there's a few, I guess you could say, different ideas on it, but it's something I, I'm gonna tell you this, and this is the truth. When it comes down to the Board of Education, although the mayor and council Borough of South River does not hold jurisdiction, yes, we could give them our suggestion. Yes, we could give them our advice, but it's up to them to do what they want to do. The best thing you could ever do is to go to their meeting, voice your opinion. Their next meeting, I believe, is February 1st? Next Monday. So, it's next Monday. So, please, go to the meeting, voice your opinion. I know they're gonna have the plans out. It is a nice-looking building, but at the same time, there was, you know, words to be said. So, please, go out to the Board of Education, voice your opinion. They want to be heard. They want to hear you. You know, this is, this is South River. We're all part of the same thing. Besides that, moving forward with a big problem that we've had in this town, and I know that I spoke to the chief briefly about it, and that is there's been a rash of Cadillac converters and all kinds of other stuff being stolen. This is something that is not going to stop. This town is 2.7 mile radius. Any given one time, you have three patrol cars patrolling 17,000 people, and it's not easy, especially when you have police officers that may have to come into the station just to write up a report. That disables the town. The best way to prevent it is to be their eyes and ears. If you see something that's out of the ordinary, call the PD. You're not nagging them. You see something, if you see a license plate that doesn't belong, call the, call the Police Department. Do not confront the person. That's something I'm gonna tell you right now. Don't confront this person. I had this issue happen to my mother right in front of her own front door of her house, and it's, it's a, it's a problem that we're not going to resolve unless we help the Police Department move forward. One of the things that I suggested, I spoke to the chief, he's gonna chime into it, was a crime watch, something that I know other towns have it. I know that once upon a time, you're right.
Had it.
We once upon a time had it. So, with that said, chief, if you could...
Yes, Mayor. Back when Chief Wes Bamba was running the Police Department, he had tasked me with organizing a neighborhood crime watch. At the time, I was in the Detective Bureau. I believe I was a sergeant, and it was due to the rash burglaries that we had throughout the town. We organized, went out there and tried to promote the Neighborhood Watch program. There was only one area in South River that actually came forward that actually wanted to participate in this program, and the lady that was spearheading the program was Mary Ann Hoffman. I know she no longer lives in town, but she was very, very good with organizing her neighborhood and meeting once a month in her backyard and going over problems, you know, not only with the Police Department, what we see, but what they see in their neighborhood. It was in existence for probably about a month. The good news is, during that timeframe, the burglar was caught. It just happens to be that the burglar was shacking up in that, I don't know if many of yous remember this, there was a building, a house on Main Street where there was a fortune teller, all the way up Upper Main, on the right side, by Main and Hillside, and that was abandoned. And that individual was actually breaking into the house and living downstairs in the basement.
Which was four houses up from Mary Ann's?
Yes. And with the help of that neighborhood, when they saw this individual walking around in the backyard, they called us, and when we went there, the proceeds from many burglaries that were going for over for the last six months were in that basement. So, the bad news is, because we caught the burglar, the Neighborhood Watch program went to the wayside, and it hasn't been in existence since. So, speaking with the mayor, this pandemic, this epidemic regarding these Cadillac converters, it's not only in South River, it's everywhere. It's a major problem that occurs not only in this town, not only in this county, it's throughout the state, and it's just not getting, just not getting better. So, we had spoken about bringing this program back. I instructed Danielle Stone to look into this organization, and she will be here at the next council meeting to answer any questions that you may have.
And chief, could you just explain, because one of the things we get a lot is, like, why aren't the police chasing after the vehicles when they see them? Can you explain the new AG guidelines?
The AG guidelines into vehicular pursuit has changed over the years. We are not allowed to chase motor vehicles except for certain enumerated crimes and first-degree crimes, but when it comes to catalytic converters, we're not allowed to chase. So, you know, that changed right after, I believe, right after COVID, right on 2020, where they, where they put that into effect. It was so bad, it wasn't just catalytic converter thefts, there were actually car thefts and carjackings that we couldn't chase for, and they actually changed the law right after that to allow us to do that. So, when you see our officers going down the street, and we were involved in a chase not too long ago, and we had to call it off because of the high speed that this person was leaving in, in town, so we had to call that off. And there's also something that we also have to do. I heard that they were complaining that we didn't turn on our, our overhead emergency lights when we were going after the person that was in that vehicle. We're not allowed to turn our, our overhead lights on until we actually get close to the vehicle. So, that's called closing the distance. These are, these are mandates by the Attorney General. If we don't follow them, and God forbid, something happens, our officers are liable.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief. Any questions towards...
The only thing that I could make a suggestion to is if the people can keep their vehicles that are susceptible to these thefts and everything off the road and in the driveway alongside a house, it makes it a less likely potential for a theft or vandalism.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I speak about this all the time. You know, if you see something, say something. If people don't want to call the Police Department, that's what we're there for. I believe the misconception is that people think that we have 32 officers, and all 32 officers are working at one time. Remember, we're a 24/7 organization. So, you know, the amount of officers that we actually have on the road at maximum is, is five, and we can go down as low as three. So, with, with all the issues that, you know, that are going on in town, rescue squad calls, you know, fire alarms, you know, speeders, you know, we're pushed to the limit. So, when I say, you know, we had an individual up here a couple of months ago about when should he call regarding commercial vehicles, call us. Anytime you see something, call us. That's, that's what we're there for. You know, we're fortunate enough where we actually have a full-time PSAP, meaning a public safety answering point. We have dispatchers that are staffed down there. So, when you dial that 238-1000 number, somebody will answer the phone, and they'll let the officers know, you know, what the issue is.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
The best deterrent is you. I'm going to be honest with you. Exactly what Councilman Krasinski said, keep your car on the driveway, although that may not be the best solution. Keep lights on. Have cameras on. Have, you know, listen, every little thing counts just to keep a person away. Will it stop them if they really want it? Unfortunately, not. But like I said, just keep your eyes open. If you're, if you're, and I do this now. I'm used to, I always had this pattern where I would go home a certain way. Now, I go home a totally different way, and one of the reasons is I'm sitting there looking for something that's out of the ordinary. Something as simple as going one block over and going back home makes a big difference. So, please, you're the best eyes and ears for the Police Department. Moving forward from the, one of our biggest issues, and I know we, we touched on it today with two of our ordinances, which was parking, commercial parking in the street, 18-wheelers specifically. I'm telling you this, and I'm telling you this because I witnessed it today. No more parking in the street. You are not allowed to be in the street, period. The police will ticket you, and if it comes down to it, an environmental will come down and start fining you for something that you never thought you would ever get. I'm telling you, no more parking of these rigs in the street, anywhere in this town. I had enough of it. I'm sorry. This is South River. This is not the port. This is not Newark. This is not New York. This is South River. Enough. I'm telling it to you now. Enough. Age, I know you heard everybody. Thank you for what you did with Department of Public Works. I'm going to tell you this. I'm going to thank the residents for what they did by keeping the cars off the road to make it easier for you to actually plow and ice, whatever it had to be. So, to the residents of this town, thank you. You did a great job. I know it's still cold outside. Check on your elders. It's the most important. If you have an issue, please reach out to the Police Department. I know, speaking to Craig Miller, he's ready to deploy some of those guys to help the elders as well as anybody that can't move around. But please, we all work together. This is South River. With all said and done, I have nothing else. Is there an adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Check it.
Okay, we're all done. Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor.